At this time, I'd like to call our regular meeting to order. We have with us this evening Chaplain Greeley Mitchell is going to lead us in our invocation. And followed by, and we're very proud to welcome tonight Cub Scout Pack 716, the Arrow of Light Den. They'll be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance following our invocation. If you all will please rise.
Let us bow our head. Dear God, oh gracious and heavenly Father, we are so thankful for the blessings that you bestow upon us. We ask you for knowledge, wisdom, and understanding during this deliberation. We ask you to lead us and guide us in our decision-making process. Let us make decisions that is harmony, that is in the best interest of the citizens and the town. We are so grateful for all this blessing. Thank you for the young people, heavenly Father. And we ask you to be with this town and the citizens as they go to the polls to vote tomorrow. We ask you to have your perfect will and your perfect will in all and everything that we do. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
And now scouts, if you'll move over, they're going to get close to the mic.
Wait, pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if you, you may be seated, but you don't mean if you'll stay right there?
Hi.
If you know anything about scouts, they have to have, they have to do certain things to earn ratings. And one of those things is they need to learn a little bit about local government and a little bit about community service. So tonight, they've come and they've learned about what it's like to be a part of Hope Mills. They've got to take a tour of the town hall, and they've also got to learn a little bit about town government. So I'm giving them a special certificate which verifies that they've been here and they've learned a lot. So Hayden Schell, congratulations and thank you for coming this evening. Jalen Crosby. Thank you, Jalen. I think your parents will probably care to come up here and stand this way so your parents can get a picture of you. Joseph Cole, come on up to the side. Joseph Cole, here you go. Congratulations, you can get her on the side, sir. Nikki Giorgano.
Doctor.
Yeah, I'll give that to you. And this is Dr. Marcia Nelson, she is their Cub Scout leader. Oliver Rodriguez. Why, you're telling me to do that too? There you go. Oh, you just, just saying. Thomas Nelson. Thank you. Timmy Gunn, right here. And Wyatt Somersum. Okay, turn around so that your parents can see your picture. Thomas, scoot him in a little bit. Can you get him? Thank you so much, and thank you, Dr. Nelson, coming and being part of this tonight, appreciate it. It's been a great time. At this time, do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Before we take care of the presentation, next we have the manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Board of Commissioners. Update on the Rockfish Road sidewalk project. Staff has reported to McGill that the Board of Commissioners was not in favor of the sidewalk on the other side of Rockfish Road, and that it was not a viable option, and asked that they reengage Charles Street construction with a traffic control plan. Johnson Street Sidewalk Project staff has sent the water extension permit to PWC. Our ADA transition program with Stewart. Staff is continuing to conduct the self-evaluations. Survey on the Golf View Greenway property. The boundary line along the leased parking lot area has been staked out. The survey is still on schedule for mapping completion of the full survey of the property by November 20th. All of the ADA signage, mile markers, and directional signage has been installed. All of the pet waste stations have been installed. The dual trash and recycling containers and the water cooler stations should be installed within the next couple of weeks. Fountain Lane property. Staff has executed an agreement for the property to be surveyed. And once the property has been surveyed, staff will obtain quotes for parking improvements and privacy fixing. Trade Street Museum. Public Works Director Don Sisko met with the architect to incorporate the proposed changes to the property and prepare a clean set of drawings in order to solicit bid proposals. Paving survey. Kircher has sent some combined GIS shake files and pow bill mapping for staff to review. The new newsletter, letter. In just one week, we have sixty-three subscribers to the new town newsletter, Hope Mills Happenings. Trunk or Treat. Even though we brought the event inside due to the threat of bad weather, we served the largest crowd on record. One of our part-time employees had a clicker, so we were able to get an accurate count. We served over twenty-five hundred children at the trunk or treat event. All of the department heads and myself will be out of the office next Friday, November fifteenth. We will be participating in team-building exercises and strategic planning and goals for this next year. The Town of Hope Mills employees will enjoy their annual Thanksgiving luncheon and the third annual service awards on Thursday, November the twenty-first, from eleven a.m. to one p.m. at the Hope Mills Parks and Rec Center. The old weight room equipment at the Parks and Rec Center has been sold on gov deals and has been picked up. The flooring and televisions for the new weight room have been delivered and will be installed in early November. The contract for the new equipment lease has been executed and returned to the vendor. The new leased equipment will be delivered to Parks and Rec in mid-December and installed in early January two thousand twenty. Athletic Supervisor Stephen Kessinger has been selected to be the new district director of Dixie softball. In this role, he will be over the entire district for softball, which includes Hope Mills, Hope County, Dunn, Lumberton, Pembroke, and Littleton. He will be responsible for hosting district and credential meetings for All-Stars and run district All-Star tournaments. As such, Hope Mills will host the 2020 Dixie softball district tournament, which means all meetings leading up to the tournament will be held in Hope Mills. Hope Mills Parks and Recreation will take money for admittance to the tournament and allow the youth association to run concessions. Hope Mills Parks and Recreation and the Town of Hope Mills is very proud of Stephen in being selected for this position. Recently, PWC staff contacted our Stormwater staff to inquire about the Gardner property next to Heritage Park being cleared. They had some concerns about the heavy equipment on those two sewer lines that run through the property. PWC asked to meet with Stormwater staff on-site. Stormwater staff met with Mr. Gardner and his son and representatives of PWC. They identified the sewer lines and helped to establish a plan for moving forward with the clearing without using the machinery over the lines. PWC has requested a plan for future work on the lower side where those lines are located, and Mr. Gardner agreed to provide the information. This is considered part of our Stormwater permit compliance. And we have received official notification from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, the North Carolina Flood Plane Mapping Program, that flood insurance, that our flood insurance rate map and flood insurance study report for our community has been revised by the letter of map provision. So officially, the lomer has been approved. This was submitted by Schnabel Engineering last, last year or the year before last. Can't remember exactly, it's been a while. Code enforcement. Recently, and I think probably some of you may have received an anonymous letter concerning vague references to code enforcement not being conducted in the area of Golf View and Village Green subdivisions. And I've been reporting at the meetings, and you all get the monthly reports. And then periodically, during the week when we don't have a meeting, when there is something to send out, I typically send a manager's update to you all by email. And a lot of times, there's code enforcement details in that email as well. So even though it may not always be made public, it is given, the information is given to you all. But during the last two weeks, eighty-two code violation notices for junk vehicles, public nuisance, weeded lot, and minimum housing standards were given out in the following neighborhoods. Pine Press Street, Fairway Forest, Eaglewood Forest, Friendship, Duncan Street area, Fairway Forest Apartments, Timberlake, Village Green, Golf Acres, Crest Hill, Kingsmill, Meadow Brook, Creek Bend, Golf View Road, Porter Street, Legion Road, Bon Air Place, Woodland Hills, Fox Meadows, Southampton, Behind Lowe's and Walmart, Ellison Street, John Brady Road area, Pinewood Lakes, and Rockfish Roads. And given the fact that it's just one person that does this, and typically it's between forty and fifty notices per week, I think that's pretty good. And the letter said that you don't do anything. And also, you know, I, when someone sends a letter of complaint, I would like an opportunity to be able to address that back to the person. And it's very difficult to do that to somebody that does that anonymously, because I can't say, hey, here's what we are doing. So I am saying it publicly now to the public. Here's what we are doing. And we are going to continue to do that. And starting in January, we do have another position that is going to be opening up, where we're going to be moving someone out of inspections and into code enforcement. So there will be two people working code enforcement. Although it'll be a temporary position, kind of a trial basis, to see how it works and see how it goes, we are making an effort to try to, you know, to try to correct these issues. So I just wanted to go on record with that. So thank you for indulging me on that. As far as development goes, the following projects are currently under construction at this present time. Circle K Gas Station at Chickenfoot Road. Circle K Gas Station Main Street and Rockfish Road. Biscuitville North Main Street. Chick Filet, Hope Mills Road. And Waffle House at the Traymore Village. Should be starting construction very soon. In the area of planning, I've reported a number of times on our study of the MIA area and our strategic planning. North Carolina Commerce has completed the draft of Section One of the Town of Hope Mills Gateway Plan 2020. Planning staff is currently working with them to schedule the next work group meeting within the next few weeks. The upcoming meeting will center around reviewing the general project tasks and the meeting list, crafting a planned mission statement, reviewing the plan outline, and discussing the scheduling of the first public meeting. Subdivisions. Hope Mills Plan Review Staff has reviewed the preliminary plan for a proposed sixty-one lot residential subdivision along Elk Road in the Hope Mills MIA. Staff is currently working with the developers coordinating the submission of a voluntary annexation petition. And that concludes my manager's report, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next, we don't have any public hearings, public comments. The first one for public comments is Julia Palmer.
Julia Palmer, 5531 Heather Street, Hope Mills. To say this has been a tumultuous journey to Election Day would be putting it mildly. I'm sure everyone would agree. So disappointed in us as a whole with all the ugliness that I've seen come out. So many untruths, so much slanderous verbiage that's so unnecessary, you know? You need to make a point of, with your character. A person's integrity is their word. And I, I just haven't seen a whole lot of that from us as a whole. But I'm, I'm kind of concerned about this one thing that, that came up on Facebook. It's from Mr. Mitchell's page. And it says, okay, y'all, I have put the dogs at the lake park on the agenda for Monday night. Please come and speak about this issue to show your support. You must sign up by six forty-five. And then the following comment that you made was to someone specific, and it says, you all show up eleven four nineteen, seven p.m. to the town board meeting and ask that dogs be allowed at the lake. It's the night before Election Day, slam dunk. I'll vote for it. Is that democratic process?
That's a sense of humor, though.
Oh, so we make jokes about our job? Oh, excuse me. I thought with it, election year, you kind of would be more specific and careful with your verbiage. You don't want it being misconstrued. Thank you.
Next, we have Billy Terry.
My name is Billy Terry. I live at fifty-five thirty-nine Bottom Street, Hope Mills, North Carolina. And I come here tonight to urge you not to let dogs on the lake. I come up here every day, and I use the walking track, and people does not clean up behind them. There's poo all over the walking tracks, there's bicycles, skateboards, no rules are enforced. If they want to walk their dogs, tell them to take them to Golf View Greenway or take them up here. But I urge you to vote no on letting the dogs hit the lake, because our lake is absolutely beautiful, and it should be a family event. It's kind of hard to have kids when you've got pit bulls and golden retrievers and all them out there, because kids, you know, want to pet them and stuff. And so I just urge you to, let's keep our lake beautiful and for families. Thank you, and good luck tomorrow.
Thank you. Next, we have Ron Maury.
Don't need no damn microphone. I'm Ron Maury, fifty-seven forty-three Legion Road, Hope Mills. I'm here because, well, with this election going on, I had to put my cellphone in therapy. And the last thing I saw was about the dogs at City Park. I love dogs. I'd rather have a dog than a person. A dog's never lied to me or stabbed me in the back. I'm a combat veteran with PTSD, and my dogs have saved my life more than once. But they do not belong in a small area like that where people lay down on their blankets and that. And then when the ducks and the geese come back, you're going to have to hire three pooper scoopers to keep track of it. We need to, that lake is too small, a park is too small for dogs. I love dogs, I'll take them anywhere, but that's too small for the population of this town. And I hope y'all reconsider and do some research before you make a decision. And I promised I'd behave till tomorrow.
Greeley Mitchell.
Greeley Mitchell, four zero five six William Bell Luther Drive, Hope Mills. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Town Staff. First, I want to take the time to say thanks to the parking ricks, to Jamie and whoever's out there working with her. I don't know if y'all pay attention when you drive by there, but I've seen that young lady laying on the ground, decorating, doing the cosmetic work that it takes to keep that place beautiful. It is amazing. When you have employees that place that amount of effort and that amount of attention to detail to doing their job, that individual need to be commended. I'm telling you, because I had individuals work for me, and she would definitely be a team player on my team, because the work that I've seen her do and the effort she's putting out there is amazing. That goes to any of the other individuals that work with, don't want to leave them out, but I single out because I've seen her out there. Next issue, I've heard Commissioner Bellflower say it over and over again, before you make a decision on anything, take it before the committee, take it before the staff, let them go back and forth, and come back to you with a comprehensive plan and decision. And before you take any action on anything, I think it is the prudent thing to do. It is the smart thing to do, the right thing to do. On this dog out there at the park, I'm telling you, if you don't manage it, it will manage you. And we don't need no one, I'm telling you, folks will abuse it. They're not going to clean up the poop. That's why they have this area out here for the dogs, segregate it. If it's not done properly and a standard SOP is put in place, it can come back to create all kinds of problems for us. And we don't need that. Thank you all, and I wish you all luck in the election tomorrow.
That concludes public comments. Next, we have our consent agenda. I'll read the agenda, and if there's anything you'd like moved to new business, we may do so. Consideration approval of the minutes from the October seventh, twenty-nineteenth special meeting. Consideration approval of the minutes from the October seventh, twenty-nineteenth regular meeting. Consideration approval of the minutes from the October twenty-first, twenty-nineteenth regular meeting. That concludes our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve it as read?
Motion to approve as read.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. We have no old business, the first thing on new business is consideration of authorizing the town manager to execute a contract to replace the HVAC at the Thomas Campbell Oatman Memorial Chapel. The lowest responsive, responsible bidder was Best Air AC in the amount of sixty-five hundred and fifty dollars. So discussion? Someone?
Madam Mayor, this was requested by the board, and we will have to bring a budget amendment back, but this is the lowest bid. Electricity's been turned back on. Once the heating and air conditioning is installed, they will proceed with the rest of the weatherization of the building.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve allowing the town manager to execute a contract to replace the HVAC in the cost of sixty-five hundred and fifty dollars. Any other discussion?
Madam Mayor, that's a reasonable price there. I just spent almost fifteen thousand on mine, and it's, it's a house.
Okay, any other discussion?
It's needed for our stabilization plan.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Next discussion, possible action related to ordering a permanent missing man table display for town hall. I put this, I requested this to be put on the agenda, because what is, my concern is, we do put the, we do use one during Heroes Homecoming, but it's becoming a trend, especially in areas where you have a high military population, to have a missing man table. The cost for an all-service table runs anywhere from about a hundred and sixty dollars up to two hundred dollars. But the basic one would work, and we could then, we can supply the other pieces that go to it. And there's an example of a, a missing man table out in the lobby. And those are provided by Heroes, by the Fayetteville Tourism Heroes Homecoming Committee, and then they're collected at the end of the month. So they rotate them in and out of the city. But I just think for Hope Mills, it would be a good idea. So I, I request that you would consider this, and it would be something that we could add to stay in our lobby.
Motion to approve the mayor's request.
Have a motion to approve, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Thank you very much. All right, next, we have discussion and possible action related to the dogs at Lake Park. And I'll turn this over to Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell, who asks this to be put on the agenda.
Well, I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean for tonight to go to the dogs. But anyways, I like to frequent Dirtbag Ales. Maybe y'all have been out there. It's a wonderful venue of lots, thousands of citizens enjoy it on a weekly basis. They do bring their dogs. They don't have any issues. I checked with Jackie Hall just this afternoon. I know at Myrtle Beach, dogs are allowed on the beach only in the off-season. They're not allowed on the summer. We certainly don't want people laying their blankets down, areas that are not appropriate to lay in the sun and that type of thing. And I don't have a problem with it being tabled. I do take exception to being able to discuss public issues with constituents on social media, because it's no different from talking to constituents down at McDonald's or in the hallway. In fact, I talk to two thousand, when I'm on social media, I'm talking to possibly two thousand of my friends, not just twenty-five citizens. So I'm all about transparency. I'm all about keeping things out, open and front. And didn't mean to hurt anybody's feelings, you know? I just, I've looked at the comments on the Fayetteville Observer, it's about a fifty-fifty split between allowing the dogs and not allowing the dogs. I am personally a dog lover, I have four dogs. They've never bitten anybody. I know Dirtbag Ales, they don't have retractable leashes, I guess, because there's something about the dogs can get too far away from their owner. They have to be on restricted leashes. But they haven't had an issue. I don't know that we've had an issue, maybe we've had issues here at Municipal Park, I don't know. But I haven't heard any feedback, any negative feedback. But certainly if y'all want to table it, I'm fine with that. If you need to do more research, that's fine.
Madam Mayor.
I need, one question I need to ask, is this an ordinance change? Would this be part of the ordinance?
Yeah.
So this would have to go through the route of the ordinance change. Can't be something done at night's meeting. Also, if I'm not mistaken, when we did the ordinance, the Lake Advisory Committee prepared that ordinance. And, and that ordinance, I guess I can ask Commissioner Bellflowers to relay what was decided from that committee when that ordinance was prepared.
Well, and that's why, Madam Mayor, my recommendation is to table any action regarding the ordinance change and send it back to the Lake Advisory Committee. We spoke, the Lake Advisory Committee considered this action in many lengthy discussions, back and forth, about allowing dogs into the park, the pros and cons of allowing the dogs back into the park. And I mean many discussions before we brought the ordinance before the Board of Commissioners for approval. What wasn't looked at at that point was perhaps not allowing dogs in the park from one May to one October. That wasn't an option that was considered. And maybe it is something that may be considered, and you should go back to the Lake Advisory Committee. But at that point in time, we didn't want the dogs in the park because of various reasons. One of them, one of the reasons then, several of them, I'll just go through them, was we had a geese issue in the park. This was, and this was when the lake park was first coming back. The sod was coming in, and of course, animal urine, you know, disrupts the sod, and we spent a tremendous amount of money in, in re-sodding the entire lake park. And then you had the issue of controlling the dogs in the lake park, Mayor. And, and who would control those? Now, over the years, and I'll say this, because I, I talked to three veterans with service dogs on the golf course just last week. Over the years, a number of folks have acquired service dogs, therapy dogs, and emotional rescue dogs. I mean, I have dogs myself. And like Ron was saying, I mean, my dogs have definitely aided me. I can speak from personal experience with them. These three veterans that had their service dogs out on the golf course, they chose to go out there because, mainly because of the congestion in the municipal park here. And it's a quiet park for them to, to walk with their dogs out on the golf course. And it's a quiet park for them to, to walk with their dogs out on the golf course. Now, of course, service dogs are allowed in any of our park areas. That's municipal, that's the golf course, and of course, that's the lake park, and we know that. But I think the issue is, Mayor Pro Tim, if I understand it correctly, we're not talking about service dogs, or therapy dogs, or emotional rescue dogs. We're talking about just regular dogs on the leash.
Yes, sir.
I think that's what we're talking about. So my recommendation to the board is to table it, send this request back to the Lake Advisory Committee for their recommendations back to the board.
I think we'd also need to refer to Parks and Rec, because when it comes right down to it, no matter what Lake Advisory recommends, who's got to maintain that park is Parks and Rec. And I didn't know if our Parks and Rec director had any, any inside information, how you might feel about this. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, and I meant, Ms. Adams, is it all right if I ask him to give us some, any input?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. First of all, I love dogs also.
Yeah.
But we did talk to staff a little bit about it, and maintenance would be a concern. We already have our hands full with the geese poop, and so dogs would definitely add to that if they don't, you know, if owners don't pick up after their dogs. Also heard a lot about people with phobias, you know, against dogs, and the lake park would cause, you know, would, you know, cause that with people that, you know, traditionally have used the park and not used the dogs. And then, again, have the issue with dogs and the geese. And if people are not controlling their dogs, you have that issue with them chasing the geese and things of that nature. So it probably would require more, more maintenance from our staff, because already, especially during the spring and summer times, we're having our lake attendants pick up, you know, all of the geese poop, so, you know, dogs just add to it. So that's, that's my two, three cents.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the recommendation is to send it to the committee to, for?
The two committees.
Two committees.
Well, both committees.
Both committees, yeah, to Parks and Rec and to, okay. That concludes our new business. We do have.
Do we need to vote on that?
I don't think so. I think you can do it by consensus. Do you want to take a vote on that?
Do we need to?
You can, but I believe you can do it by consensus.
You can do it by consensus, unless there's someone strongly against doing that. Okay. All right, the, of course, the municipal elections are tomorrow. Food Truck rodeo is, is the, this Thursday from 5:00 to 8:30. Holiday offices will be closed on next Monday, November the 11th, and we also have our Hero's Homecoming celebration that day, which starts with the first event at 11, but the big event is at 3, where we have the Golden Knights that will be jumping in. So just a lot of exciting things for our town as far as Hero's Homecoming. Historic Preservation Committee will meet on November 13th at 5, and the Board of Commissioners' next meeting is November the 18th. We do have our committee liaison updates, and I'll ask with Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell if you have any updates from your two committees.
Madam Mayor, the Municipal Advisory Committee did not meet last month, but I do have an update with the Hope Mills Historic Preservation Commission. They basically, they recap the 12th Annual Mill Village Reunion. They talked about historical excavation at Heritage Park, and the Historical Society at that time had about $1,600 in the bank with about 13 memberships so far, and about 10 bricks sold so far. That was as of October the 9th, and they are trying to sell memorial bricks or pavers that will be placed down by the parish house and the chapel, and as well as at the museum. I think we're going to start at the museum on Trade Street, if anybody's interested in that. I think they're selling them for $100 apiece for the pavers. They talked about the electrical inspection of the church. The commission discussed the site report, structural analysis of the parish hall. Rob McLean expressed concerns about extra cost unaccounted for. Mason Steele questioned the necessity of the hole in the floor for inspection and the danger of pulled downstairs from the ceiling. They talked about proceeding with the recommended Phase 1 stabilization to our board as written, except to change the word "patching the floor" to "repairing the floor," and "patching the vinyl siding" to "repairing the vinyl siding," and to leave the internal staircase in place and the external spiral staircase, and to revisit the idea of replacing the front porch instead of repairing the front porch, I think it is. And then, and then our town planner, Chancellor McLaughlin, gave us an update. He's also the staff liaison for the commission. And there's still some items that were needed at the state level so that the commission can be approved, and I think they're working on those last few things. And that was the extent of the meeting. Thank you.
Hey, Madam Mayor, may I add something to Mayor Pro Tim's discussion about the FTCC inspection walkthrough of the Episcopal Parish House? We finally, late today, we finally got a, a firm time and a date of when that's going to be. It will be Wednesday, this Wednesday, at 3:00. Several department chairs from, from the campus are going to want to walk, they're going to look at the parish house to see if it's a viable project for the four departments to work on collectively, starting in the spring. We believe that it is. They're going to walk through it, so that, so Mayor, I just wanted to add that, that walkthrough will be Wednesday, and I think a couple folks from the Historic Commission wanted to go. I think Rod McLean did. He wanted to go. Mason Steele wanted to go. The town manager knows, and I think Don will be there. And then Mike, if you want to be there as well, I'll bring Keith Carter from campus down, and we'll all meet down there together at 3:00.
Let me ask you a question, because we've already approved the HVAC contract. If we got the parts, is that something the school could take on, or is that too soon?
I don't know, because it wasn't part of the original plan. The, the original plan was to look at the parish house. We were never, I don't think we ever talked about.
Yeah, that's on the church, not the parish house.
Yeah. That's on. Yeah, that's on the church.
We're good.
Separately. Yeah, this is, yeah, the whole, the, the building is what we're looking at. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Edwards with Lake Advisory and the Mid-Carolina Aging Advisory Council.
Lake Advisory Committee did not meet this month, and the Mid-Carolina Aging Advisory Council meets every quarter, and that will be next month.
Okay. Commissioner Legg, Appearance and Festival Committee.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We met October 22nd, and the things that they discussed was mostly built around the preparation for Christmas, the wreaths, the lights, and everything that would be put up and, and some of them replaced. They also discussed a Thanksgiving luncheon. I believe it's December 16th at 6 o'clock. Is that still correct, Ms. Adams? The Thanksgiving luncheon, are the employees still December 16?
No, the Thanksgiving luncheon is the 21st, is this month, Thursday, the 21st.
Thank you for that correction.
Yeah, and that's the annual service awards as well.
Okay, thank you. Some of the other things they discussed was decorating, having a tree up around a power box at the lake, either that or do some artist work on that box. And I see that the tower is sitting around the box now to, to block it off from, from vision, so I guess that solves that problem. Also, have the Christmas at, at the lake, December 6th, and the parade, Hope Mills Christmas Parade will be December 7th.
Saturday.
I believe I covered all of that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next, we have Commissioner Larson with Parks and Rec.
So we had a couple of discussions. One is senior program called SMART for Stretching Movement Resistance and Training, where they had a very large following, and they started to charge $5 per class, and it has dropped off significantly. They do not want to pay the $5 per class. I think, so part of the discussion that they had was to find out how much he was being paid prior to the charge monthly. Is there a way for the Recreation Department to absorb that, for it to be a free class for seniors? But one thing I did want to ask, didn't we send two Parks and Rec employees to Les Mills Training for certification training and teaching classes several months ago?
Yes.
I, I don't know what this, what the class was for, but I, I know that there's been a shift with the employees and their duties and stuff, but, you know, in order to, they might be able to come up with some type of program temporarily that would be free for the seniors. But that was part of their discussion on that, is to find out maybe different ideas of trying to make that a little more affordable, because if you think about joining a large gym where the membership is $19.99 a month and all your classes are free, that's a pretty extravagant price when you're looking at taking that class just four times a month. You know, there, you could be doing classes every single day, so that is a lot of money. One of the things they did vote on, and it would require the board to hopefully allow Melissa to direct staff, but they would like to see Parks and Rec, particularly the director, and maybe with the help of the planner, since you both have architectural landscaping design degrees, that you could come up with some type of beautification plan for the pre-existing parks with a concentration around the ball fields, something that, that could possibly be planned for the following budget if, if permissible. And be working on that if the board would allow Melissa to direct them to have time to work on that before the next budget. And that is it.
Okay, next, we have Commissioner Bellflowers with the Veterans Committee and Rulak.
Thank you, Mayor. Rulak, I'll start with that one. That's the easy one. Well, the next meeting for Rulak is Thursday, November the 21st, 11:30, and that will be at the usual place, Grandson's Buffet on Ramsey Street. Veterans Affairs Commission, Committee met on October 24th, and some of the things that were discussed was an update on the memorial repairs to the monuments. And I understand that some of those historical records need to be, or located if possible, and some of those records, we believe, is at Ms. Jean Clark's house because of Jim, and she's going to look through the filing cabinets and see if we can find those historical records, because Jim kept everything. They're there. I know they're there, because I've seen them myself. I just can't remember which one of those two filing cabinets he kept them in. So that will be shared. Hero's Homecoming, the flyers are all out. Everything is locked in place for the events to kick off later this week. One question we do have, does the bell ring? That's the question we have. Does the bell ring?
It's been ringing.
Okay. All right, well, we'll find out next Monday for sure at 11:00. Okay.
Maybe we should do a test run.
I think we will. We might even, yeah, I think tomorrow may be a good day for that. Also presented was the third quarter quarterly report, and I have a copy of that, and that was also submitted to the town as well. It's very thorough about every action and discussion from the committee, and I believe the town, I believe you have it. And it's online, too. Everything that we discuss is online. It's a very nice one. There'll be no meeting in November and December, so this was the last meeting until the New Year was, in January. Make sure that I covered everything. I think so. Yep, I got it all, Mayor.
Okay. I had, on Wednesday this past week, I had our FAMPO meeting, and there we met the new Joint Planning Director, which is Ross Howard. He's, and actually, we met with him again today. He came out to meet with us. The big thing that, beyond talking about upcoming projects, was that I-295, the Clifdel section will be opening up, and they're moving quicker than they anticipated, so that if you go out Rayford Road, you'll see where there's, they're moving dirt, and they've got, the bridges are up, or the supports of the bridges are up, and they're just anticipating that it's going to be moving quicker. They also talked about what's happening in our case, out at Exit 41 and Exit 40 with the bridge, and it is on target, and it is set to be finished this coming year, and probably sooner than anticipated, because they have been able to keep the work on target. Mayor's Coalition on Friday, and this was one of, probably one of the best meetings we had, because we had a full house, and it was, it was held at Mama Bee's in Wade. Joe Dixon hosted it, the mayor of Wade, and what they had there was, we had PWC made a presentation, the Hospital Foundation made a presentation, Federal Comanche Economic Development Council made a presentation, the Joint Planning Board made a presentation. The reason I'm telling you this is that because even the county commissioners and the town, the county manager was there to do presentations. The Mayor's Coalition now has the opportunity that they come to us, and they come and make presentations to us, whereas when we first were organized back in 2010, it was just like a social club, you know, whereas the mayor sat around, drank coffee, and ate breakfast, and came back to wherever they came from. Now, what's happening is a lot of actions are taking place, and they're actually listening. So we were very impressed. This was probably one of the best meetings we've had, beyond the one that we had at Department Social Services, which didn't have as many participants in making presentations, but it was a good meeting also. Also, I was representative for the Senior Tar Heel Legislature this week, which I will not be able to attend, but they are announcing the new director of the Mid-Carolina Council. I do not know who it is. It's a big secret, but Wednesday, that person will be, has been hired, and so we'll find out soon. And that runs our, our three counties, Hornet, Sampson, and Comanche County, and this Mid-Carolina Council has opportunity to use a lot of money, but it's triggered mainly to our senior population. And that's all that I have. Staff comments? We want to thank you tonight for coming, and Tiffany for Ms. Starling. We know that she's out because her husband had surgery today, so we're glad that you could be here with us. Anything else?
I have nothing, Madam Mayor.
Yep, and we appreciate you coming this evening also. It's good to see you again.
Thank you, guys.
Official comments? I'll start with Commissioner Legg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Tiffany on her graduation.
Yes, yes.
That's a big step forward. We're proud of you. Proud to have you on board in Hope Mills. Like to remind anyone that's interested on serving on any committees, need to get application filled out, as those positions will soon be named for those committees. Like to say good luck to all the candidates for tomorrow, and I will say this, I don't slang mud. I don't slang mud. So if you hear that, say Jerry didn't say that, because Jerry don't say that. Jerry don't do that. I'd like to ask you to vote SMART, and I'd like to request your support for tomorrow. Thank you.
Commissioner Larson?
I do want to ask the mayor, is, do we need to take a consensus to allow Melissa to have staff look into the architectural landscaping? Or is, are we good to?
I think if you all don't object, I mean.
Then it's all right? Okay. All right.
We're good. Yep, I've already got it in my notes.
Ah, it's not even 8 o'clock.
The record.
Yeah, it is, it is. Thanks for coming out, and everybody, good luck in the ele- Thanks for coming out, and everybody, good luck in the election tomorrow. That's it. Congratulations, Tiffany. I saw you at Walgreens, though.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank the staff and Team Hope Mills for a great job on the trunk or treat. That was quite an effort. I couldn't figure out how many babies were eating that candy, but there seemed to be a lot of them. And then, I've also had a lot of businesses mention to me, they'd be glad to sponsor benches at the Golf View Greenway or other parks that we have, and we discussed some of that, so just keep that in mind.
That's very good.
As I know, a lot of citizens, I think the, the walkway at the Golf View Greenway is 1.6 miles, so some of our citizens may have a hard time venturing the whole thing. My family did it, I think, two weeks ago, and that was, is a good exercise. Wish everybody, all the candidates, only the best, and I know that God's will will be done in Hope Mills regardless, and I definitely respect the voters one way or the other, and hopefully we can all come together after the elections. I don't have much control over what people say on social media. I've tried to take the high road the best I can, and there's, it goes both ways. I wish that we could all talk to each other face-to-face. Sometimes, social media people are a little more brazen than they would be in person, hopefully going forward, we'd do a little bit more face-to-face and less social media. But thank you for coming tonight.
Commissioner Edwards?
I'd like to thank Tiffany also, and I'd also like to congratulate our town manager, Melissa. And she knows what I'm referring to. And I'd like to thank everybody.
My hobby.
Yes, your hobby. Good hobby.
My work showing. Thank you.
She did terrific with it. Yeah, she did.
Really?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight, and I just want to say that Hope Mills is fantastic, all the staff and employees are great, and I love Hope Mills, and just we're gonna put up signs and have a good time, so we'll see you at the polls.
And we will.
Commissioner Bellflowers?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight, and all the speakers who spoke with encouraging words. And I guess we got a little Yellowstone going here, don't we? And Tiffany, my sincere congratulations to you. Have a wonderful Disney Day. Thank you, Mayor.
I too appreciate you coming this evening. We do have with us this evening Candidate Brian Marley, Candidate Tonzi Collins, Candidate Ron Starling, and Candidate Bill Terry. So do appreciate you coming out this evening, and know that, wish you all luck, know that, see you at the polls, and in my understanding, is the weather's gonna be better than we anticipated for tomorrow, but Godspeed, God bless you all, and do I have a motion? This will probably be the earliest that we have ever adjourned a meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Good luck, and go home and get some rest.
Yeah, 6:30 comes early.